I'm going to call the meeting to order because I'm going to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pima County Public Library acknowledges the sovereignty of Native Nations and acknowledges the 22 federally recognized indigenous tribes of the state of Arizona and those who inhabit Pima County. We honor the vast and often unrecognized contributions and sacrifices of the indigenous people and are conscious of the ongoing experience of inequality and political inusability. In partnership with Native Nations, PCPL advocates for full access to its educational, informational, and recreational resources. I'm going to do a quick round of introductions, but I want to thank county administrators for your leisure from the given time to come and have this study session with us. I'm Mariana Padillas and I represent District Two.
I'm John Halliday for District One.
I'm Asante for District Five.
Sharon Foltz, District Three.
I'm Alvin from the library.
Jessica Hornberg to the library.
Amber Mathiason, Library Director.
Gemma Schirr, County Administration.
This is school board seat.
Great, and which lab members do we have online? Rebecca, your Honor is looking right now.
I am. I'm Rebecca Peraza and I represent.
Great, do we have anybody else online? A lab?
I don't think so.
Okay, I thought Marianne was going to.
I thought Marianne was going to be on too.
Yeah. But, okay. Great. So, we sent a lot of questions. There's a lot of interest and concerns about the future of the library's draft report. And so we sent you, you know, how do we move forward? We got the memo you sent to the Board of Supervisors about the main library and the possibility of relocation and different sites for it. So then I'm just going to hand it to you and.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you for letting me have some time to meet with you. To answer any and all questions that we might have today. I'm not sure there will be more down the road. I want to go back for just a moment and just explain, hoping for the reboot today, if you will, in that we encourage staff throughout the county to look at new ideas and new concepts. And I think this is one where, then we had staff working on a draft and idea. And then the normal course of events goes then through the way up through the Deputy County Administrator, the County Administration, through the Advisory Board, whatever might be appropriate, and then to the. This is a document that we're, you know, that started a lot of this conversation. That was a draft document that was internal to the department that had not bubbled up and gone through all the normal processes, been, any of that. And there not been an approved document, you know, by the Board, the County Council or the Normal Chamber of Events, or reviewed by Library Advisory Board for your input as well. I say that because there's really nothing, there is nothing bad is a foregone suspicion. We have not made decisions about the library. We are looking at a variety of options. And that relates to the library system in general. Where we go with libraries, all of our branches of the libraries in the budget, and then specifically to the downtown branch. So that's, I wanted to be clear about that. A couple of just key issues underway that I can speak. These are obviously policy decisions, but I will just tell you that from my perspective, there is today and there shall always be a downtown library. When I was growing up, it was, you know, it was now the children's museum. So there was a downtown library. It just looked a little different there. I don't know exactly what all that will look like, and we have a lot of work to do with that, but I can't imagine. And I would never support moving a library branch out of downtown. What we began the discussion with this branch because there is a significant amount of deferred maintenance. Yeah, I know in some of the questions, how did we get to this point? A lot of those are questions we're always going to tell you, I'm not sure completely, but it is where we are. We were just doing a report the other day of all of the deferred maintenance in the county and our building needs. And we have, we have problems that we need to fix and we have buildings that we need to, we need to address. And this is one of them. The conversation then came up, what, what do we do? And if we have to do considerable maintenance, do we move out of the building for a period of time? Move back? What does all that look like? For some of you who might be familiar with county administration, we were all in 130 West Congress probably for many years. We made the final decision that it was easier to just do all the renovation on that building at once. So everybody's out of the building and starting in March, people will be moving back in. But it's been a couple of years in the making while we were a little bit scattered hither and yon around downtown. But we had to get out while we did the work to get back in. So that was part of the conversations about this downtown area as well. Will we, to get the work done, what is the vision for this downtown library? Will we stay in the building? Is it, do we need all of the space for the library? There's open spaces. There's extra areas here. Do we, does it become a multipurpose building in some way? Workforce housing, don't know what might else though. You're talking about just the use of the building. Do we, do we move people around in the building while we do any kind of maintenance? Do we find another location for people to go while we do maintenance? Don't know. But that is what led us to having those conversations about the building. And as you saw, Madam Chair, the memo, what I'm looking at in that is what are our needs? And what are our options? And what are the best alternatives that provide a service to the community in a cost-effective way that we can take to this body and then to the Board for approval? So I wanted to mention that. The other, I think, big issue that I know discussed a lot that I want to talk about is any, any potential. Funding problems are not because of PEPS. The, the early education program is a separate program. It was funded in the first several years by ARPA funding, some of our code funding. There was a decision and a discussion about making sure that PEPS had an ongoing long-term fund, funding so that it could continue as a program. It took two years of work with the state legislature. Actually, that being led by the Southern Arizona Leadership Council to get the state laws amended so that the library fund, the library taxing district could also pay for PEPS. When we began the transition of PEPS to the library fund, that tax rate, that is when the amount of the funding really went up. Because it was to fund both PEPS and, and the library district. So we did not see a decrease in the library district funding or libraries because of PEPS. They're two separate programs. There was some concern, I saw in some information, that people might not know about PEPS, you know, or how that occurred. And a reminder, it has been approved by our Board, but it's also a program that was approved by the towns of Sarita, Morana, Oro Valley, and Tucson. So, and the state legislature. So a lot of work for a period of time. Our libraries and PEPS are vital programs that are well-supported in a tremendous way by both our community and our Board. I see them both continuing, but one does not cannibalize the other in the funds. And I also wanted to just take a quick second thinking about it to explain transfers, transfer out and such. The, the library is a separate taxing district. And being a separate taxing district, it has revenue. But then it pays the enterprise, if you will. It pays Pima County for services. Some are capital projects and the fund to continue with the capital. Some are the basics of HR, finance, IT support. There are central administrative services that are assessed and assigned. Every general fund department pays a formula. And the other departments, wastewater, flood control, library, that have separate revenue sources, pay that same formula to the central administration of the county. And that's a transfer out from the department. Okay, so, and, and those are, all of our transfers and transfers out are delineated every year in the budget that's approved by the Board, received by the Board. So I want to explain that a little bit. So it's also not money we're pulling out of any way of the district. The library district, it is a mechanism to pay for the services that the county provides. Or think of the books as separate corporations, if you will. So that's just a couple of things off the.
But the budget. Slide up on this.
Budget was the first.
Yeah, before we get to that. Yeah, let's see, are there any questions based on what's been brought up already?
Oh, wait. There we go. Oh, well, because we couldn't find a smaller font. For the bottom part of that, but just take. Yeah, 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 good, thank you. So as you can see, we had the, the library rate stayed flat for several years. And then as we began the transition of early education program is when you started seeing the library, the, the funding for the library go up, or the tax rate for the library go up so that it could also support PEPS. Which is then, you know, the last several years, looking at that increase, the change in that in the budget from 48 million five years ago to going into the 67 million. So, and then again, the current transfer out is for our capital projects.
That was the question that had specifically been asked about the $4 million. And that's what that is for.
Okay, yeah. So the funding has increased, property taxes are increasing, the budget's in, are there? And that's the information about the, the transfers. I'm sure, do you want me to go through each section or go until somebody asks a question? Or would you mind?
Let's pause after each section and see if folks have questions.
Hold on, this time.
PEPS. What is it?
Pima Early Education Program. Is PEPS the same program that First Things First and Cradle to Career started advocating in 2017 for the county to put in money for child, for childcare scholarships? And then finally, they were sort of, or finally adopted it in 2020. But isn't this the same word that First Things First and Cradle to Career, it's the same? That I don't, no, I guess it was referenced, I noticed, in the United, the Ways, it came really forward on on childcare and childcare needs. And so, this is, if you go back, I think it was the funding, a formula that, that I think they're working with, there was a coalition, including Southern Arizona Leadership Council. I don't think Cradle to Career was there, others. I believe it went to the ballot and the city of Tucson was defeated. And so that's when people began to look at what is a funding source across the county. And that's when the groups came to the Board of Supervisors and they developed a PEPS program. Twenty, yeah, twenty? Well, I have more, my questions more are about the branches and some of the changes that we've seen and some of our concerns about the data that was actually used in the.
Okay.
Draft report. Okay, is that?
Let's try and get through what we have here and then, you know, maybe it'll come up.
And so I could, you know, with just the, the effects of PEPS and what is, there's additional funding for PEPS. Is PEPS going to stay at 10,000 a year?
Or 10 million a year?
Yeah, that is the current direction of the Board. Okay. Thanks. The main maintenance issues and the details of our relationship and working with the city of Tucson. As you know, the city of Tucson owns the building. And so there's. And I know the questions go back to how did, how did we get so out of whack with the maintenance of the building? And those are, once again, I, I don't know how we got to this point. And I think, to speculate, I'd just say that like every organization I've ever worked with, when money gets tight, they stop doing the regular maintenance they need. And it becomes deferred maintenance while those dollars go to other things. For those of you who've been around the county a long time, you know, we, we rely, have always historically relied heavily on bonds. And we would go out every few years and do bonds. I think of 1997, we did two issues in the spring and the fall. Almost $750 million then, we've gone out in 2004, 2006. And we always rebooted some more capital funds. Built a lot of libraries that way, a lot of other things. And then, then the recession hit, we did nothing for a period of time and began to go back out in 2015, 2018 and lost miserably. We did have success in 2014 with the animal care bonds, 22 million dollars. But other than that, we have not been as successful. So we began a, a different model of financing. And I say that because what the county has always relied on much of its critical infrastructure since the seventies was going out for capital improvements that were made possible by the issuance of voter-approved bonds. We did not have that. And monies began to use internal general fund revenues and such for those maintenance issues. So, and I, if somebody has more better information than you are, definitely about what, history of the maintenance on this, but I do not.
The, the only thing that I think may be helpful to remind folks is that, is that just in the last five to seven years, the county has expended over $7 million approximately in terms of maintenance on our library facilities. This is above and beyond the new capital projects, Richard Elias, the, the library. Yes, the, our various branches. So, so the county has been making consistent investments and has been consistently maintaining the facility. And, and it certainly has not gone without the investment of general fund, I'm sorry, of resources in order to make those improvements.
Madam Chair, is it good to stop reporting with staff?
Well, yeah, are there any questions? And then I guess I would open it up also to questions in the memo about.
So I understand there is an agreement between the city and the county for city-owned facilities. And the city was responsible for the exterior, is that correct? And they were not, they didn't ask for that amendment, is that what? The reason it's not seen is I don't know what they were asked for. So as I look at that, you know, what I can tell you is we have deferred maintenance. We have some significant work needed on both the exterior and the interior. Under our agreement, the city is responsible, but I can't tell you for sure that they were asked for that. So I don't want to make it sound like they were asked for dollars and refused to give them. I don't, I don't have a record that they were ever asked for those dollars, to be fair.
Is that? Well, they're aware of the issue with the building. They do come and do maintenance in terms of, as the tiles are loosened, taking them down and painting. But they have not sort of routine maintenance, they've done the re-skinning of the building.
I would just say, Jan, I would encourage the county, especially because you've got Kassajak on staff now, really understands this stuff a lot, that this building means a lot to the community and the city of Tucson. It's only 34 years old. And that we could, and that some of the options that haven't been listed are saying that when you put in the new elevator system, then it's a green elevator, so it generates its own energy and perhaps even energy from the building. It can be, you can use green energy money for that. Just take the tiles off and do stuff on a beautiful mural or something to match the county courthouse. Or maybe just the HVAC needs to be done because, like, much of the building has been renovated with beautiful furniture, the children's room is fabulous. So perhaps broaden the options that are available for this building to look at the creative ways to do it that are more cost-effective or can be taken from different parts of the. So that's just. Well, and you're right, Sharon, it's, it's not all in and all out. You know, but if we're looking at renovation, is it just fixing up the current model? Is it a different structure, other pieces that can be done differently? You're right, and everything we're doing now under our Climate Action Executive Team, we're looking at what's the green opportunities, where those funding sources might be. Yeah. So I would just add that if we open our minds to what the community's needs are and hopefully with the community survey, well, it's like this. Pima County ranks last in the state for high school graduation, pretty low for the whole countries. We have most of ours, many of our school districts don't have librarians in all of their schools. TUSD, they have almost none. So the libraries are, are really a central part of being able to pursue education, pursue literacy, have internet connections, should do both work. If they're working from home and they don't have good internet or they need peace and quiet, they come to the library. Students come, and we've had, and again, the survey, I hope, yeah, reflects us. We've had enormous community feedback about how important their local library is and to the civic center. And, you know, it's a very trusted, safe place as a physical space for people and means a lot. And as we look at growing partnerships for workforce development, J-TED, family literacy for programs like Cradle to Career, the space that the libraries have, whether it's meeting rooms at Taft or like your beautiful meeting space downtown, coming downstairs, perhaps there's a way that we can, by opening our libraries up and, you know, having them staffed and making them available, they will become a very strong partner for these hundreds of agencies and school districts that need a strong partner for literacy. And we talked last, our last meeting about the confusion around AI and safety for children on the web. No one's better positioned than librarians to help guide families. So it's, it's not an emotional issue. To me, it's a fact issue about how important our libraries are in the community. And I know I felt like that totally got left out of, of their planning. But that's true. The role of the libraries is what's a very interesting conversation right now. And I'll just tell you, well, just happened today, we got a letter from a constituent, which is another sample of what comes in. And I know how your conversations have been, of course. But it was talking about why they really were encouraging us to continue to make the libraries central to all that we do and up to and including why we should have portable showers and bathrooms and needle exchange programs and social service workers. And I realized that, what I think that speaks to Sharon is libraries are important to everyone and everyone has a slightly different idea in their mind of what that library looks like. And that's, you know, part of why we have a group like this to help us look at all sides of the issue. Because that's, I know that it became more and more used as real social service hubs, particularly during the pandemic. And, and that's a different model for some of our folks who work at the library. What does that mean? But lots of, lots of ways people are looking at how the libraries could or some recommendations of how they should. And that's where we got a balance. People want it all. They want it all. That's right.
Yeah, yes, if it about main library or is it about the social services?
You know, you know, one of the weaknesses of the plan, aside from the process, was the lack of objectives. And so, you know, the plan includes $90 million for basically renovating this building and some of the alternatives. Which is great, you know, I'd like to see money spent on libraries, but, but renovated for what? What is the public being asked to fund? Now, you mentioned some possible alternative uses of this building. Well, it seems like those are the kind of things that should be discussed as part of a robust public planning process. You know, I, I agree. So, you know, so, you know, for me, the, the plan raises more questions about the building than it answered. And even, you know, the latest email about the renovation options, which I really appreciate, still didn't really say what the objective of renovating would be. Are we going to put in a bar or a cafe or a theater or, you know, whatever. So, all these big buildings and there are all sorts of options. But anyway, nowhere has been said what the actual objective of spending $90 million is. Anyway, that's.
It's a really good one. And then part of this is, what we look at is if you take today's building and you want to keep it as is and use it for the same purpose, that's the price tag to get it to that point of just fixing the stuff. It's like, it needs to be done right now. But that, yeah, the basic elevators, you know, that sort of thing. Part of that conversation needs to be, is that what we want to do? Do we want to fix what this is today and make it, you know, fix it up again and do that? Are there collaborative uses? Again, I, I can't imagine it's not heading to library here. There's, this was designed, there's a lot of open space, which is lovely when you're looking for a spot to sit and read, could we combine the bases somewhere? Could it be, could we share space? And then it becomes the question in this room. And I think that's part of what we're looking at in a community participation plan and review score. Is it to work with educational programs and let the schools use it as a library? Or are we bringing in supported jobs and the needle exchanging? I don't know. Or can they coexist? Don't know. And how does that fit the job description for the individuals? We are currently on staff, you know, what has, how has that role changed with the library? So these are all, what I'm looking at here when I say this is the topic of the reboot. We got to get out and give a sense of what the community is thinking about this. And those are, I hear all this is just starting to capture in my mind when the questionnaire starts loading up.
I, in terms of like the reboot, because I feel like in the draft report, there was, you know, this kind of re-envisioning of library services and also some cuts that had to do with buildings. And then Maine also got, kind of got put there. And, and so I'm curious about like, are these two projects that are, is it all one project? Or is the main renovation or relocation something that's on its own timeline? Obviously with some community inputting about what is needed from a downtown branch. But it feels like this building is a more urgent issue than a lot of the other things contemplated by the draft report. And so do you have an idea of like, are they going to be moving on separate timelines? Or is this all still going to be just, everything that was contemplated by the draft report, is that all moving together as one whole?
Okay. So I think it's moving at this point. But I take the point from my, right here is that this, there was a big plan. And because of how special the Valdez Library is, a lot of focus went to what are we doing with the Valdez Library? And the urgency of that in some folks' minds, I think, was to make sure we protect it before we do something stupid. And so that's standing here to say, nothing is changing at this point in time. There are a lot of options on the table. I don't know what they're all going to work like, you know, at the end, but nothing is changing now, right now. That was an element of a much larger plan of the future of the libraries. And again, what that, I saw it as was our professional staff beginning to look at recommendations that can be brought to the Library Advisory Board and the Board about where are we going with libraries? You know, what, what do libraries look like today versus, you know, when, you know, when I was flipping through the card catalog and while I'm away at San Luis. What, they were, they're two very separate elements. And I'm trying to, to the extent they're sorting on different timelines, but if you were to take the timeframe, that is, we are going to be re-envisioning and reimagining libraries, obviously, then I think main library is a piece of that. Neither, in my mind, have really definitive timelines at this point. And but you can speak to some of the broader, the plan, what was, if there was a sense of timeline for that. But I saw it where some concepts.
Yeah.
They can be dropped in different elements. Have a date. December 2024. Well, yeah, it did.
Yes. Several times that it should have just been a list of steps without any dates attached. And so, you know, many, many apologies for going out like that. But it, again, wouldn't have gone out in the manner that it did if we could reverse time. So I think you can rest assured that those dates, I mean, we couldn't possibly do all that by December, could we? So, yeah. And what I want to speak to also is that we're not, I think what was the point that was missed in the plan is that we're looking at how we might serve our community differently than we do now. While we have lots of people coming into libraries, we have a lot of people who never make it to a library. And we wanted to look at ways that we could get to them. We're looking at ways to do outreach in a much broader way than we've been able to do since pandemic. We've been putting out fires basically with our staff and keeping our libraries open. So our idea was to utilize the staff we have, expand the library services at the, at libraries that we own. There are many that we don't. And then do much more robust work in the community. So not to disenfranchise people from having space, but to bring the library service to them where they are. If they can't get to the library, they can't use us. And so that's what was at the heart of the plan. And I'm sorry if that did not come through.
At the ones that are a little bit to our discussion.
She's down in the building.
Great.
Okay, Mary Ann O'Neill can't be here because she's flying somewhere. But she said in an email, she said, can you ask how many square feet of Justin, the first, second, and third floors of main library? I mean, you know, how many square feet are in the first, second, and third floor?
$90,000 for the whole thing, close to parking garage inside of.
Well, she's specifically interested in just those three floors.
I don't know, can I, we can.
Yeah.
Okay, so I need to make sure you get that. Because I was, I think, I think if the building spaces about 40, 41 and divided, but I'm making numbers up, so let us get you them.
And then she asks if, does the Wells Fargo. And then she asks if the Wells Fargo proposal include having admin administration there? Or is it just for the public?
I think we're looking at moving both. That if it's not Wells Fargo, it's another location. If we have to do the renovation here, our number one goal was to see, could we find a place where both will the library services and administration could all go? So that we could, much like 130 empty building, do the renovation and then move back in. So we're looking at space that could accommodate both, but depending upon how renovation gets done, might not have to go that way, but it could be both.
And she asked, if the size of Wells Fargo is just for the public, then we would need more than to help people staffing it as this larger with a big sized branch. Okay, that's just a statement. And then the next one, last one, I think it's about, since there are way more incidents at downtown due to population, would we have more assistant managers than other less incentive pro branches of comparable size? I guess that's a question for more for Amber than maybe.
I'm sorry, writing down the last question.
She was asking if there would be more assistant managers at the, I guess at the Wells Fargo branch than at other less incentive pro branches of comparable size.
We have several assistant managers here in the current location, so I'm imagining that we have a smaller number, but more than other branches. Although if it said, it depends on the size. So that look my professional staffer.
Yeah, no, we're we, we take into consideration incidents when we're deciding which, which staff at which level that we want to assign. So we've been working on your new service models in which our goal is to have more higher level staff at libraries with higher incidents. There's libraries that are standalone, smaller location libraries that have more incidents than the main library. So we're trying to do that for all of those libraries.
One of the, one of the pieces that really is a potential opportunity is as square footage is reduced, the ability to control the use of that square footage, but we are, that's that security or contractor as well as through our staff improves. When we have less vacant spaces, when we have more condensed footprint, our ability to monitor and to make sure that what's going on in those facilities is what we want to go on is enhanced for our staff and it decreases the burden on our team.
And I would add that the main library is uniquely shaped. So it actually poses more difficulty than other libraries and on, on one floor, being able to even see everything that's happening. There's a lot of corners.
With the Pueblo branch, it seemed that the most important reason for closing was because of the incident and what affected had on staff. And I agree that that, you know, that it's important, our staff needs to be safe. But also in that general area, you know, there's a dearth of services and, you know, the library has always has been a constant in the community for you know, many years. The Valencia branch is pretty much at capacity right now. There's no room, you know, to grow. I always saw it was like an overflow. And I know that thinner there has not been, you know, that whole older part of the center has been neglected. And of course that has affected the library. But I'm just wondering if and I, I agree that outreach is important and that's the way we get, you know, folks to come into the library, you know, they meet us out in, at a community event and you know, they feel comfortable, they understand that they have staff that, you know, be able to assist them and they come in. So outreach is important and I, I'd love to see that grow, but I think we still need to have physical spaces where those folks can continue their journey, you know, with the library. And so I know, I mean, that facility is owned by the city, right? And so
We own the building by the complexes.
Yes, I mean, I don't know. A lot of these, I think most of these facilities are in District Five, which is a concern, you know, for our supervisor and for, you know, as a resident of District Five and having grown up there and knowing the importance of libraries and knowing, you know, that schools, their libraries, you know, have been diminishing, you know, over time. How important it is. And so, you know, one way or another, we still need some physical places and, you know, are there other ways that we can assist with the safety, you know, safety for our you know, staff?
I think this is actually a good segue into the next portion.
That was, I'll take a minute, I can just tell you that one would go down and remember walking that property at some several times with my work deal when he was still the manager of the city and say, what is it we need to be moving together here? And where do we need fencing together? Where do we need space? And what we ultimately do is get more people within other buildings. And that when there's a lot more traffic and use of the other buildings, which is part of the outreach. So we'll bet chicken and egg on some of that. But you know, how do we get the people who are there now and our own our staff and the people who want to come to the facility to feel safe being there? And who has to go first to get others to populate the other buildings and join in that activity in that area, safe for everyone?
The piece that I would offer is that, and again, perhaps it didn't come up through in the, in the draft report process because it was still in preparation, is that Frank Delacour was envisioned as being the beta, the, the, the new vision, the new sort of model of potentially what a library might look like. And that involves some stuff there physically onsite that involved a lot of stuff that was in the community precisely because it is in that neighborhood. Precisely because it is an area that has tiny, low connectivity, low the receipt, low income. And a lot of folks moving through because of our adjacency to the, to the transit center. I, I think part of, and we perhaps did not do a good enough job by conveying that, that we really see that as potentially one way of thinking about how to organize services differently and how to bring services to our patrons, to our end users, because ultimately we believe that that would be a smart strategy.
And she can share, but I mean, we did have a lot of other county people there. Wanted to come in with us also today is Debbie County Administrator Carmine DeBones. And Carmine is here because his departments include, you know, he works with all the facility side of things and project design and construction and the people who will do renovation and building, looking at that physical side of the plans and the program. So he has joined us as well today to hear about everything going on, feedback about it. So, thank you.
Thanks. If it's about scheduling our services, can we actually wait until she does her kind of like
Follow up to what Emma's talking about?
So you were talking about availability to try and outreach to get to people. We heard from the community and also I think some of John's research shows that our hours of operation and availability have greatly decreased since 2019. And we heard from a lot of working families that the library isn't open in the evening or even more especially on the weekends or holidays when they would like to use the library. So I think that is part of the accessibility that we have to consider for people. And then back to looking at services and the complex. I'm wondering why, when I looked at the coalition, human county coalition of homeless, I think that we have at least 27 agencies under contract, as well as we have the health department and youth clinics. Librarians have been very smart and very willing to do whatever was asked of them. But a lot of social services and even pharmacy kind of things have been involved into their jobs rather than at the health department or where the nonprofits who have specialty and professional staff. So as you look at availability of services, I would ask also that the county say, is this part of the library's mission? Especially when they're getting into staffing, sort of staff? Or is this something that the health department or one of our contract agencies like La Frontera or, you know, anybody, yeah, somebody else should be picking up those services so that that doesn't fall on the library. And it comes back also to then the kind of programming that here at Valdez, for example, we haven't snowed children's program at all. And that's gone away over the last six to eight months. It's, it is true. I went down and asked for the calendar. It's not there. They, they, you know, we now have story time on clean. But compared to other libraries, and when you look at the population, the community around here, I'm just saying that I, I'm hoping that through this process, we can get the librarians and libraries back to be able to do what they're, nobody else can do, which is empower literacy and failing literacy and that kind of thing and have a place that people can go and feel safe.
We do have a manager from the main library here. Lady, would you talk about the children programming?
I have to skip off to that right now. I'm gonna stay focused and think, I'm just saying. I work with children's librarians across the district and I pay attention to what's on the calendar. Just probably what's on the calendar.
I think they're trying to maybe correct a statement.
That's understanding. Because we do have a weekly story time.
Yes.
And we do have every day after school, we have a drop-in program for teens.
Yes.
Every, every, every single day. So if that was a misunderstanding, I hope that that helped.
No, it wasn't. I knew you had a weekly story time. But if you look at someplace like even Arabaca that has 27 events a week for children compared to, we have one. And that's on teens. The teen program has did pretty well, but it's the task where it doesn't, it's a few girls and girls.
Well, we do. Staffing issue, which was well detailed in the draft. So I hope that that helps to shed some light on it. Including right now, we're in need of smaller children's staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it's a staffing.
It's staffing, okay.
Like others, I'm just looking at some of the different things that we've had to start doing and working with free distribution, pet distribution, so much of what was happening during COVID versus where we are now. Amber, in terms of we've got numbers, you know, we've got FTE. Specifically those. I, I can address the, the HR part of this because I know that part of what the library has talked about and unfortunately, it's not, we need to, the library department uses the time it takes for our HR process to get anybody hired in the county. And I'm just telling you that we that has been the subject of a lot of focus. And my hope is that people are seeing that change considerably. Does it just keep, it just, I'm sorry. Jessica's the boss. There's been, we, we, thank you. And any, so that would, I know there was issues about how long it was taking to hire people. And then that was causing a lot of that, insurance impact and the number of FTE that were available and we're hopefully chugging that box.
Yeah, we've worked with county HR to do our best practices in with the library. There were things that we were doing on our end that were slowing down the process. Shortening our, the time that we allow things to be posted and just moving through things very quickly, doing a lot more evaluation of resumes before and that, before we actually interview. And so, so we're interviewing smaller numbers of people, but getting more of the positions filled. So a lot of great work has been done there. And there was some question that came up about headcount numbers that were, headcount or FTE at our last meeting and there were some that were in the report as well. And so we went back to the budget and so just wanted to talk about these a little bit so that people understand. We did do some incorrect reporting to Institute of Museum and Library Services. I'm gonna have to check on the years just to make sure, because I did find some discrepancies when I did the, the work for this meeting today. Or we did, thanks to Jessica and also the team from county finance helped us as well. So you'll see that I, if you look at the budgeted FTE, so that's every year when we do the budget, there, there's a certain amount that's budgeted for and that's where the, how the money is designed for personnel in that year. So you'll see that our budgeted FTE were 404 for fiscal year 20. But I think the key thing to, and headcount is that we have a lot of intermittent staff that are not in full time. Some of them work like 19 hours. And so that's why you see such a large number for headcount. So that tells you then the actual number of people that were working in that year. But then the, I think the key one for us is filled FTE. So the number of positions that were actually filled. So if we were budgeted for 404, but only had 305 of the actual permanent staff. So that number has been fairly consistent, although some things that happened in 2020, as many of you know, we had a lot of retirements and resignations. We had it's showing 99.5 vacancies there, which I thought we had only had 80. So it was worse than I thought. And then we did open up Sarita and Esmond Station. Well, Sarita had been opened, but in a much larger facility and then Esmond Station. So that was a draw on staff as well. And then we were very happy to cover salary increases, but we lost some PCNs there. But you can see that overall, we still would have been at the like 300 level where we should be much closer to our budgeted FTE. And so that's our goal. We're getting really close for fiscal year 25. We've only got 26 permanent vacancies right now. And we have just completed two big recruitments for librarian, one in library associate. So we, that will cut that number down significantly. And then from here on out, we should be able to fill positions as they become available. So instead of having to hire 10 librarians, we would hire one as soon as a vacancy was available. So I think we've made some really good strides and, and also clearing up some numbers on that.
The other piece that I would offer is that, to be clear, none of our classifications have been rewritten to add these other sort of social service components. That is not, that is not something that we have ever undertaken to do, that has not been something that has been requested by the library team or that have been approved by HR. The programs that, that come for your awareness here to the advisory board are, are programs that have emerged in order to meet a variety of needs. Those needs are met by, in some cases, some of our staff, in some cases by staff from other departments. But they do bring up the issue of the co-location of those services, which is a real issue. Libraries are one of the few spaces across the country that the library can, that the public can access freely. And, and so that, you know, that perhaps needs to be revisited if the desire is to sort of control more of the population that is blocking in through the doors. There are turnstile counts and when, and you've seen this, our turnstile counts are down across the system. Our, but what is up across the system are our digital checkouts. And so we believe that there is a difference in the way that people, patrons, library, public are using the services. And we are trying to anticipate what that need is going to be, what it is tomorrow and what will, will be into the future.
Yeah, let's pause if there's questions about this.
Yeah, well, yeah, staffing is actually my main question. I'm gonna came out of the draft plan because it clearly was like a call for help, you know, it was like we had a staffing crisis here. And we really need to do something by December to fix it. And you know, of course, the plan is very controversial as well. Citizens came out to speak against it. And, and, and when that happens, you know, we, we, there's gonna be public scrutiny and we're public. And so and Sharon indicated, I looked directly, you know, so I look, you know, what's the problem here? And there are about 26 other libraries in the country that serve about the same population as people. Did you know that we have about the highest revenue? We do. Okay. And, and our numbers are very, our output measures like open hours and circulation are very low. Okay, but I narrowed it down just to the Western states. There are about six or eight libraries, you know, like San Diego's counties, Lake County, Franklin County, a few others. And before the pandemic, you know, we were right up there. We were serving, you know, we had a lot of open hours. We were circulating a lot of books. Then the pandemic came and we were way down and they all did. But after the pandemic, they all went way back up to what their open hours that they used to have, but we didn't. We're still like twenty percent, more than twenty percent below our open hours than we had pre pandemic. Which actually relates to um, you know, talking about outreach, you know, we're like, but Catalina, which is the closest library where I live. They're not even open on Saturdays and they're not open evenings. So P, you know, re- regular people who work and pay taxes in Catalina, they work in Tucson. You know, when they go to work in the morning, libraries close. When they get back, it's closed. It's not open on on Saturdays. You know, we've, by by not getting back up to our pre pandemic open hours, we've really disqualified, disengaged. A huge percentage of our population, because it's not just Catalina. Like I said, it's it's region wide, it's like twenty to twenty five percent fewer open hours than we had just four or five years ago. So I I I say, so we're open fewer hours. We're checking out more books electronically, which doesn't require that much staff input, but yet we have this staffing crisis and I just don't get it. What, how, how is this possible that we're providing fewer hours with basically the same staff? But now we have a crisis, but before the pandemic, there wasn't a crisis. And we have in the budget, I mean, our budgets, we're the highest in the Western United States. We're tied with San Diego. So, so they don't have a crisis.
Well, I'm trying to avoid, I've been talking about that plan because we can't, we have twenty six vacancies at this point. Okay, correct. So. Yeah, how will we, how will we handle, what's cooking?
So we have been increasing hours as we increase staff. And so um, once those are filled, we'll be able to review hours again. Um, we do have some nights where I don't think we ever need to go back to nine o'clock at night. We didn't have enough people in the buildings even back then to warrant that. But I think we do have opened up till seven and um some of our larger libraries. And yeah, some of our smaller ones don't have that. Um, but again, if we. Can't fill the positions, we can't open the hours.
So we're not talking about increasing the hour. We're talking about cutting, closing, we're closing three branches. That's, that's cutting more people off from library services. So so instead of being at the bottom of of our comfortable library as far as open hour, and that's where we are with the bottom. We're providing fewer open hours than all the other Western libraries that have the same populations. We're going to go from the bottom to even lower than the bottom in terms of open hours. And you know, so some taxpayers, I was talking to a guy this morning, he pays, he has a nicer house than I do, he's paying over seven hundred dollars a year for his library tax. And just let me know that he, he's happy with the libraries. He just doesn't want to see any of them closed. So, okay, so everybody supports the libraries. If I look at my taxes, I'm in in the, since pre pandemic now, we've gone up thirty two percent. Open hours have gone down like twenty five percent. So I pay more tax, getting less service. How do you explain that to the taxpayers? I mean, you're going to have to explain it. I I still haven't heard any answer.
Just as we hear. Yeah, again, what you're referring to is a doc, you know, is a document that I got to go back and really. I I have not spent that much time with it because it was a draft and it didn't go well. But the fact that what I hear you talking about is why is the, why is the staffing down, where hours down? And what are people getting for the dollars?
Right.
And um, we will get back with that if I come to the next meeting or at some point in the future, because again, I just don't. It's a, I didn't spend a lot of time.
Yeah, we used to get the top down. Something happened.
Yeah.
Everybody had a pandemic, so.
I don't know that everything had eighty vacancies at the end of.
Yeah.
So, good.
That was the struggle initially getting everybody back up, right? Because we just weren't, we weren't, we got those vacancies.
The other piece that is unique is that the number of branches that are part of the system as opposed to. As opposed to um consolidation of systems that have a smaller and larger size uh facilities. And we opened up, and we opened up during that intervening period, two more branches here. So, so no, we have not gotten up to where we should be. Um, and um, and we've made tremendous um progress in terms of our hiring. Um, and it will take us a while to get to that point.
Eventually, the bottom line is the bottom line. Taxpayers are paying a certain amount for library service. They're getting less service now than they got before the pandemic. And eventually, they're going to wonder, when do we get our hours back? By the way, the other comparable libraries have some more, some less as far as branches go, like Fresno has, I think, thirty one branches. I'm not saying we want to be like Fresno, their, their funding's way low. But anyway, I'm glad you're going to look at that.
That information, if it's possible, I'd love to see it, to see if he, he pulled the analysis.
Amber has it.
Okay, okay. Do you see what I can? Yeah, I want to take a look at that.
So I'm seeing on the budgeted uh FTE that it consistently is going down. So that's like one of my questions. And then the other is, so it's a filled FTE, it's going, it's, has gone up aside from one year, right, or those two years? Uh, why is the budgeting going down? And is it possible for some of the vacancies, like you said, that the headcount includes a lot of like part time employees? And like, I'm confused why you would have people that aren't actually working for the library, that aren't being offered vacancies like in the level of one hundred and seventy and seventy three and sixty. As the years have increased, like, why don't some of the people that are already working for them become full time employees?
And and many do.
Yeah, they do, they do. So can I just add on to that? Because I feel like we've been told, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like we've been told many times that the amount of budgeted FTEs has not gone down and that the problem has been like filling the positions. But looking at this, the, the, and that we were working with the same number of positions that we were in twenty twenty. So that once we got up to the staffing level for our budgeted FTEs, then it would be great. But looking at this, the, the number of budgeted FTEs has gone down dramatically since twenty twenty. And and so I'm curious, like, the board supervisors issue, and I'm just arguing about the process about why, you know, it's the same question as yours. Why has the number of budgeted FTEs gone down even with the opening of additional branches?
And the board supervisor says approve the budget, but not completely on that. They, they, they approve or or change a budget that staff or who is to them. Um, do you want to speak to, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not, I don't have that knowledge of exactly why we've gone up or down.
Well, I think there's an encouragement to, if you have positions filled in.
I guess, to the vacant position. Yeah, vacant positions, the vacant position species. We have had uh. What we found historically is that the departments um uh keep vacant positions, that they, they've got on the budget, they got those vacant positions, they never fill them. And that is in effect the contingency fund for the departments. So about eighteen month, year eighteen months ago, the board adopted a policy about vacant positions. And any position that has been open for two hundred and forty days or more is swept. And so uh the only way to keep a position is through a, uh, you have to come back and appeal and request it to stay open. So when I go back and look historically at what some of those old numbers were, some of it relates to that old model where people uh. Couple of things went into it, Pima County, because of the HR problems we talked about, nobody ever wanted to give up the PCM. But here, one of our individual person, even if they didn't need any more, nobody gave them up. Because you always knew if you gave it up, you'd never get a vacuum again. So we developed a new system so that if you let go of a PCM, you can get one back as you need it. But there have been significant sweeps, that we could see the vacancies, uh, we, we. When you have positions that have been open for two hundred and forty days under board policy, those positions are eliminated.
I guess I was understanding, Amber, what you've said multiple times is that that process had not happened for the library. And in that we have not lost positions because of them being vacant for too long.
I think you have.
Well, since, we haven't recently, and I I would say that some of the reduction in budgeted FTE, we may have done. Um, when we're given instruction on how to put the budget together, if we need to stay within the same budget amount that we had the year before. We might make a decision to um lower the number of budgeted PCNs so that we could have that budget for other things that might be happening. So if there is um a project that needed to be paid for, or um if we were doing building projects or something like that. So in order to make the balance, the budget balance, if we already didn't have positions filled, then that may have been the reason that we were lower. In that, like, I'm looking especially from twenty to twenty one.
But fundamentally, it's, it's actually a trueing up of what it should be, right? So the labor market has been, has been relatively steady. Our ability to bring folks into uh into our open positions has been relatively constant. We've been relatively successful despite losing almost a hundred people in one year. We've been able to maintain a level of staffing um and and maintain a level of um service. I don't know that there are more bodies to, out there to be recruited and hired into those positions. What you're seeing, the delta between the, the filled FTE and the budgeted FTE, the fact that it's narrowing. To me means that we're getting to a, a more realistic um staffing level. For the current operation. Should the operation grow? Should we decide to, should the board uh direct that we have twenty four hour day libraries? Then obviously, we would have to staff differently and we'd have to sort of figure out how to make that happen. But for the operation that we have today, I believe that our FTE is closer today than it ever has been to the current footprint of the operation.
Why is there a staffing crisis?
Because there's a shortage of folks who are entering into these.
But you're saying, I'm kind of get close to where we want to be, but you have to report that this is crisis.
And also, we're told on, also that like every position is getting many, many applicants. Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
Oh, um, so I have a, a couple of questions following up. It in, I've read the county budget several times from twenty seventeen up to now. I don't envy your job at all. Um. It seems like you've added like four deputy directors and some other administrative positions over the last few years compared to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Yet our services have gone down. So I don't know how that affects your budget and headcount. And then my um second question is. Uh, are, are you willing, is the library's administration willing to experiment with having some flex hour days? So that on some days, the library doesn't open until noon and goes to seven, and then you could have some weekend hours. So to see if that helps accessibility, particularly in neighborhoods that have more working class neighborhood and a lot of people who are commuting. And they need those evening weekend hours. I don't know if you've ever tried that with the libraries, but I would love for you to put that in your basket of, of options to think about.
Sure, we thought about that. And I would just like to say that we have three deputy directors, not four, and we've had three consistently for a very long time.
Oh, when I was reading through the staff, I thought they were like six, seven.
No, three.
Okay.
Um, and um, what was the second question? Think about that, yeah. And we actually, that's the reason why some of our libraries are open Tuesday through Saturday instead of Monday through Friday. And I will admit, I made a big mistake when we came back from pandemic, opening libraries from on Monday through Friday. Should have opened all of them Tuesday through Saturday, absolutely. Um, but, you know, again, hindsight, that didn't, it's not what we did. So we do have branches now that are Tuesday through Saturday. We've thought about having branches that are um Sunday through Thursday. I mean, these are things we're thinking about, but we haven't moved on it yet. The other piece, it is difficult to staff when you do those kinds of hours. Um, pandemic changed things a lot. And um, we, as the staffing model that was presented to you before in uh, many years ago. We never staffed our branches in a way that allowed for many people to be out. So um, you know, there are times now when we have folks that may call, we may have five people call out from one library. That's really hard to come back for, for to keep a day open. So these are the things that we're working through. And it may mean that we have to actually add more staff to branches just to cover the hours that we have right now. Yeah.
Well, and the good news is that based on the information you gave us last month, um, attendance is increasing. And I think if you're monitoring things, just like the children's department for checkout, you'd see circulation's very high. And people are still adjusting to the pandemic. I know like TEP is not bringing everybody back full time until January. But you'll get employers and you'll get people batting downtown or in, in the various places. Um, and the county's working on getting internet across the whole county. It's a big project. And there's still uh internet deserts. PMF are the only two can't afford it and they depend on the libraries. Um, uh, extra, I often see people parking in the parking lot in the evening using the internet. And even, again, I don't know from a security standpoint, but if somebody like Pima College wanted to have a class at night at one of the libraries and is providing staffing. Is, is that allowed? Is that allowed? You know, I mean, I think that kind of.
That happens a lot. We feel many of our libraries to have the meeting rooms separately, which we.
And it's much appreciated. I have many of these downstairs and it's really awesome there.
I'm still hung up on the staffing and service issue because I'm confused in terms of. We know that the amount of service, the amount of open hours is down from what it was in pre pandemic, right? Like, that's a fact that we all agree on. We're at three hundred thirty eight point nine budgeted FTE. And we're being told that once we get those twenty six vacancies filled, then we will be, you know, providing the service that needs the, the needs of the community. Um, and so. And I'm still unclear if that means extending hours, expanding hours, expanding access to the branches. But I'm also curious about, just thinking about it. So looking at the four hundred four point five budgeted FTE from twenty twenty. If we take away the eleven PCNs used to cover salary increases, that still means this fiscal year, we're down fifty four point one budgeted FTE. And so my question is, what would the library services look like if you had the fifty four? Knowing that with the new staffing, but I'm sorry, I can't on, um. You might need more staff for a branch than, than you did previously, but what would it look like if those positions came back that had been here before? Yeah, I mean, we could expand hours and we could expand outreach, absolutely. That's what we do. And then if we just fill the twenty six, where does that leave us at in terms of the services being offered? I'm not sure where that, I would have to actually put it into our staffing model to know what twenty six does for us um at this point. But it would need some, some extra hours. I can't say that we're going to be pre pandemic hours. I can't say that today. I can let you know by now. But, but you know where the twenty six vacancies would go? Like, they're, they're tied to specific branches? Yes. Oh, we can't say with any specifics, any type of services that's provided, but changed once we reached full staffing.
From what I've been hearing, you know, at these meetings, a lot of the bottleneck was in your hiring process. There were extra, you know, things in there. And so that caused maybe some of these positions to be swept because they ended up being vacant longer than they should have. Um, it sounds like now your system has improved and you're able to, you know, do your interviews and, you know, hiring quicker. So once, you know, you fill those last twenty six, I mean, I, I know you're going to lose like ten or whatever, but. I mean, it sounds like you're coming to a point where you're able to hire more regularly and not wait like a year for, you know, ten people or whatever. So, you know, hopefully you'll get there and then, you know, your branch folk can say, look, we really need another children's library. We really need, so that in the next fiscal year, hopefully you can ask for more positions and be able to get back to a level where when you have all of the callouts, you know, that absolutely you can still.
And in fact, as we're starting to build the budget right now, the, my leadership team has been working on what are the additional positions that we have for in the next budget cycle?
And, and a lot of that, and this is the part that comes back to me, the bad part. Because when the library comes in and they want to do more, as an example, even if it's a separate tax league district, I look at the overall tax rate. Uh, and so if the library district goes up five cents, that means I got to find another place generally in the budget where it can go down to accommodate that. If we want to keep a level, uh, you know, even if we want to keep the tax rate level. And so that's the, it's, the, the library district is not in a silo, being able to just come in and say, we need more and here it is. Because they wouldn't even be trying to keep a budget balanced across the different departments. Uh, these last years, we've said, everybody starts with what they've done this year, any additional. Any additional programs, the FTEs anywhere else, is a supplemental request. And the last year, we did not approve supplemental requests. So I think it's going to be, uh, well, this this process is going to need to involve having the library, working with the library advisory board to make that recommendation uh up through to the budget if you need that increase in a tax, in that tax rate for the library district to support those additional programs and hourly. I'm confused, Annie, because the revenue that the libraries bring in is more than enough to fund all the libraries. And then, uh, even if if we take the, I don't know if you said five percent or whatever the uh adjustment is for. Yeah, yeah. But then, and you said the ten million coming a year from for PEEPs is not affect. No, no, it's like, one of the reasons that we increased the tax rate is to pay for, to include, to pay for the PEEPs dollars. So that it doesn't um, it there's that's additional funding for PEEPs on on this tax rate for the library district. So it just seems like there's plenty of money to operate the library uh back to the more robust twenty nineteen level than.
We've never said there wasn't a budget.
Well, I don't remember.
We've been talking.
We're time out. We do see staffing, and I assume that's because of money, right?
We wanted to do the most services that we could with the staff that we had. So if we didn't keep certain libraries open, we could free staff up to keep other i- libraries open more hours. We could have more staff out doing the outreach.
I I I really think that the labor piece is a really important factor. These bodies that we have historically hired into these positions, folks are not going into these disciplines, and the ones that are are not coming to public libraries. They're going to research institutes, philanthropy, a variety of different sort of settings. Um, folks are not, folks are not looking at a public librarian as a career option that is is not a growth field. You're not going to see that, um, you're not going to see that in in any um community. And I think that that is a reality and that's part of the thing that that Amber and Luke have been grasping with. So so maybe we need a different kind of qualification for the folks who provide services at the library, maybe. And I you can speak obviously to that, but if we just went to the FTE, the budgeted FTE that we had in twenty twenty, if we made that happen uh tomorrow, I do not believe there are the bodies out there in the labor market for us to hire and recruit at the current um it within the current classification at the current levels of compensation.
In ourselves, recent library one um application, there were twenty-nine people that applied and we need to fill twelve positions. And.
I thought you said two hundred and fifty.
That was for the library associates, which does not require a master's degree. So one of the things that we're looking at too is at what level do we require a master's degree? And we're trying to add into our positions, um, if a master's degree required, making a ro- more robust uh minimum qualification that could be um years of working in a library um coupled with some education. We're trying to make those changes so that we can attract more folks.
We're not unique, um, you know, except for now, as far as our output measures, we're at the bottom. So a lot of people are dealing with the same issues. I realize they're important issues. Perhaps you should talk to if you haven't the the university or the library school, they might be have some some information on that. But this hour scheme is so important because like by not getting back to those pre-pandemic hours, hours library hours are negligible and not inclusive. And we talk about D E I, but we're, we've cut off so many people from using electric, you know, Dr. Garcia, you mentioned how the door count, now of course it's down, closed by twenty-five percent. Few, we have twenty-five fewer hours than we had five years ago. And and more people are using electronic media, which is great. But of course they are, because they can't check books out because this little library is closed. These libraries are huge public investment, books and computers and, you know, and they're to have them closed, it's just, it's just a shame. And and it cuts off, and so many working people and students just don't have access to our libraries because of the hours that we've failed to provide. It's just like a serious problem, controlling or the or the hour reduction. Our turnstile count would still be down.
It is going up. I mean, people are still adjusting post-pandemic.
Yeah, so I just wanted to think, you're okay with the the questions from the public?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Yeah, and it's, yeah, it's fine. And, you know, I'm just, I I don't think we've seen that data in terms of controlling for the hours, but the turnstile data is, the turnstile numbers are down. We've seen overall numbers and so I, you know. I I feel like the more information I get, the more confused I get. Because I would, you know, I was under the impression we had tons of applicants for every position, that the library didn't even go to the career fair because like it had enough. And now it's like, oh, it's really about, you know, the the positions that we're hiring for. And I think it's great looking at other forms of way to get people into library and one without the M S degree. But um, it's just, we're still in.
I just was curious how many of the people that are part of that headcount could be invested in with the dates, with the budget. Like, are are some of those people holding uh masters and they're just not hired full time or?
Precisely. My sense is, in my conversations with Amber and Zach, if you correct me, we have someone who is working in the library and has their, is qualified for a position. If we have, and they've been in a part-time position, we truthfully move them into the full-time position.
Yes, I heard this criteria. We actually have a program called um Growing Librarians, which is where we encourage any of our staff um to promote to different levels and help um guide them in um educational or mentoring um that would help them get into.
A lot of those part-time staff are retired staff that we are lucky to retain in that retired capacity. And specifically, we not want to be full-time. Uh, but we're lucky enough to have their talent at the table to staff our our operation.
Twenty twenty-one, we were having like ten people in one FTE. Think about, I was looking at the, in twenty twenty, the five sixty-six would jump out the page for me. And I remember talking with Amber at one point that we had up to ten people in one FTE, in one uh PCN because they were looking at tenth at the time, and so the.
All right. Have you done anything to try to attract bodies? Because I see that the budgeted FTE has gone down. And so that budget could go to in increasing offers for bodies that you must find more palatable based on their educations. Have you explored any ways to attract people to the library?
Well, you're going to really start finding this speaking a little globally to county and every, every department in the county. Because this has been really one of our primary focuses in the last three years um is on recruiting and retaining staff. Uh, we are just completing a classification compensation study to increase everyone's salaries and get people paid what they need to get paid and to get them in trajectory so they can see what the future might look like. That's part of the losing eleven to cover salaries because we did have increases in actually some, which was, was it like one or two that we did the year prior?
Yes.
So we've been looking to to do that. Um, and that's just basic salaries. There's other stuff we've been doing. Um, I I think like every other employer, everything we can to keep people. We added five hours, five days of vacation time. We front-loaded it so that the day you start, you get five hours. You don't have to just build and improve. Um, we've increased, uh, we added flexible work hours. We added astonishing for people who are out in the real world. The county did not allow telecommunication uh up until the pandemic. Um, and so now we do, uh, there, we've looked at just about everything we can across the county to see what it is, how we do a better job recruiting and retaining talent. And the final analysis, looking at the benefits, uh, work life, work-life balance with flexible work schedules as well as days off and salaries, um, how we're really hoping to focus on that. That's the county libraries as a subset of that. And I know that, and that's part of what we've been looking at now is how do we adjust which, just what are the requirements for the job? Does every one of these jobs that historically needed a master's, does it still need that today? And I look at you and part of what we address every day is what I look to you and hope we find others to have a conversation with because it becomes increasingly difficult for people my age to decide what it is that's going to attract someone else today. And yet you have a whole room of people generally who look more like me, who are making decisions about what's going to attract people who look more like you. And we need to do a whole lot better job just bringing the younger folk to help us figure out my my guessing what it is that's going to attract you to work for the county. Maybe very different than what's real, and so we have to have more conversations about that. Jan, I just added this, when we uh first became aware of the draft plan in August and one of the driving factors that was listed in that was staff shortage, um, stress from staff, which I believe part of this because they're being asked to do many things that are outside of their librarian duties. See, we call them pharmacy duties, which I think accurately describes on what they were doing. Um, but is it just you and tell the chair, I'm not going to take. Um, but so just by, I will just say that whatever changes Jessica made after everybody expressed concern about the lack of advertising for positions. And I would happen to be at a wedding that where a librarian from Virginia was getting married and there were librarians from across the nation who all grew up in Tucson. They were all, you know, three of them were looking to come back to Tucson. They all said, we'd never seen a gentleman advertise for Tucson. And and uh the bride sent me all these national websites for librarian jobs and we were not listed anywhere. So I really appreciate whatever Jessica did, but I'm, I I guess I don't know, um, you know, I'm not always diplomatic. One of my concerns is that decisions get made by a small group of administrators without even talking to their library branch managers or without talking to the board. And they come at it from a perspective, I think John called it distress or crisis, you know, how they were looking at, these are the problems. And it's kind of like, well, instead of trying to fix the house, let's just sell the house, get out, not tell the lawyers what's going on. But um, I I do think there are a lot of resources that the administration would would talk to their community partners or the board. And we just, you know, do some brainstorming that we. Our libraries are one of our greatest assets. And I think about all the big decisions that are coming up. RTA next tax, city of Tucson has had a sales tax, sorina just lost her sales tax. People trust libraries, they love libraries, and if they don't feel that we're being honest and open about the library system, how is that going to affect their well-being and and their trust in in government? I just, it is one of our greatest treasures, our library system and all the assets. And even more than it can be from our partners involved, we need to do for literacy and education, workforce development, economic development, yada, yada, yada. You know the list better than I do. I I'm hoping that from this meeting going forward, we can look at how we strengthen our library system rather than stronger.
Okay, that, I'm just putting that.
But one thing I will tell you, Sharon, that my experience with the libraries is that there's probably more participation and input from within the department, in the department, in the library department than just any other department I've seen. I have seen particularly during the pandemic, when we were having meetings um virtually, uh, that there there seems to be, and I think there has been historically, continues to be significant outreach to hear from everybody within the department. So I have, I have, I have always been impressed with the fact that they're doing that here in the library and do a good job of it. So um, I think it's just something which we can build rather than needing to start afresh because they're doing it and they're doing it well. We can always, we can always do that. Um, same with the, you know, the, this is, you were right, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to come here and again, continue to apologize in that uh, the libraries have been trusted asset in the community and and people who work in the libraries have been trusted. And by um, I think it almost speaks to that transparency issue by making sure that draft, that staff within the organization had copies of everything. Um, things get out when thing had been approved or necessarily agreed to by others. Um, and it's putting us backhanding a conversation. The good news of all this is we're having a conversation. And that everything that we do as a library is being evaluated by all of you in the library advisory board, everybody in the uses libraries. Uh, it, do we have a big enough budget? And do we have, yeah, I look at it in orders, we, what's our budget? And, you know, what what's the, what's the right amount, what's the perfect amount of staff? Um, and what might that look like? And then what's the realistic amount of staff? Even, as you said, if we had five hundred positions, could we fill this model? Don't know. But then another element is what do we need to do to be evaluating? What what is the skill set we need for that? So, Jan, you know, if there's, I'm rarely, as you know, Sharon, I'm probably, if probably never, maybe a better word. But if there is a good side of this, it's got a whole bunch of people talking about the importance of the libraries and this particularly, and Catalina, the few ones we've really been looking at.
So I want to be mindful of time and be able to move on to our, the the next steps discussion. So if there's anything else about staffing or services, if we can wrap it up, I think five minutes.
I I was wondering if the library system offers any internships to university students during the fall or spring semester.
We do. And um, you have graduate systems as well, so you can.
Well, let's move on to next steps, because I know we have a multi-page document that's outlawing a community engagement plan.
Yeah, and I didn't, sorry, that you have to go through this step by step. I just wanted you to have been asking for a while about what a plan would look like, and this is the beginning of one. It will change depending on um what decisions are made. So whether we have library staff um doing the community engagement process or if we hire more consultants than the different ones who's working on the survey, um, they certainly would have influence over what, and that's why we said draft.
Yeah.
Because the um, they, you know, uh, dependent on some of the decisions that are made over time.
And then, you know, what I'm, in doing to the plan, telling the email I was looking for earlier, I just was going to mention it because when I said, Sharon, this is uh, the 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 difficult position our board is at when they're balancing. This was the email saying libraries should hire more navigators, more social workers, have mobile medical and mental health clinics, needle exchanges, and mobile bathrooms and showers. But that's one person's vision for a library, I would look like, for instance, two. A lot of different, we're, we're in a process. Yep. Do we um then push back to the human county health department? Because a lot of those are health issues. Or one of our social service partners, who my county coalition almost, is they, these are the issues that we're facing that libraries cannot fulfill to the level needed. How do we share that? And share this, of what we do now? I mean, the library department does do that, our social services, we do that. I'm just telling you that part of the difficult times sometimes our board has is hearing one group saying, we need to refocus on what the library's core mission is. Well, they'll get the con- the comment saying, you're not doing nearly enough, you should also be doing mental health and all of that. I think what the libraries are trying to do and have done a good job, the final sweet spot of do pro- provide library services and then doing what they can to take care of the folks.
I'm just, I wanted to just share one thing about, um, I know Narcan has come up a few times. Um, and that is not something that the health department asked us to do. That's something that um staff members felt like they wanted to have Narcan available because of situations that were arising in branches. Um, our staff are not required to administer Narcan. Um, they can if the the situation arises and they feel comfortable giving it, but at least we have it here. Um, also, when calling for emergency medical folks, then they can already be in hand. And um also having it be available for people to take from the public. So um, I I don't want it to come across as the health department is voicing things on us. We um do try to partner with them because we have more locations across the county than probably any other department. I might be making that, but I think we have quite a few. And they are public spaces, and so it is a great place for people to be able to pick up things like COVID kits. And it is a great place for them to be able to meet with a health provider. Doesn't mean our staff has to be the one.
Yep, I've, you know, just, as you know, we, our offices are across the street, and so we have Narcan training. I think it's like the new first aid, you know, that we all, um, I keep Narcan in the car. We just, we should be going on the streets every day. It's, it's again, like we used to do sadly in the stay-at-age and we'll walk around, I can do, I can do CPR. Um, and I've got Narcan, and and again, it's not a requirement of the job, we all just do do that.
I mean, that's, it's difficult to engage with this plan um or the the outline that we have here because it's, it's a lot and we haven't got it, right? Um, but in terms of the consultant involvement, if determined to be the best option, I guess, you know, there's a, there were the consultant engaged already, there's a survey that has been uh drafted already and suggestions have gone into it. And so. There's a so there were the consultant engaged already. There's a survey that has been drafted already and suggestions have gone into it. And so. There's a timeline here that just says most one to two. So like, what is? What where do we go from here in terms of this outline? What happens next?
So to put it in context, when when Amber withdrew the the draft plan from moving forward. I asked her to stop everything other than the, you know, finalization of the survey. One of the things that I heard from you here at this table on two, three occasions was a discomfort. Or or. A feeling that 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 anything that we might sort of formulate in terms of community engagement. Should be vetted by somebody external should be perhaps should be done by some a disent人士 third party. At least that's how I heard the. That conversation. And so and so this is just the beginning of what might be either. A a document that we would use to engage. A consultant as we develop the scope of work, or it might be something that we would, you know, task to the staff to do to formulate, to flesh out in more detail. And so that's that's where we are at.
And Mancha, I think there's nothing needs to get done tonight. From my perspective, when I realize we need to go out and spend all that time talking to the public. And the reality of that conversation began while we were still. In the midst of an election. And anything we do at that time is going to be asked. We lost it in clutter. And I think now what we've talked about is I think we're just getting messages out to the community. We can lose a lot during the holiday time. So the reason also this is designed for months is I think it comes back to, you know, library advisory committee and staff, when we drop it down and start it. And that may be better served, really getting the public's attention, having an opportunity to go out to the public, starting at the first of the year. But I think the idea is just a draft that people can look at. What have we missed? What can be added? What else do we need to do? Where are we missing the boat in terms of making sure that. Everybody in the public has an opportunity to give us feedback on a variety of issues.
Okay, that's great. One of the other things we heard was that one of the hindrances during the draft report was that Marissa's position, new position wasn't filled yet, right? And now you're here. With community engagement. And so I'm also curious about how that department or that part of the library. You know, intersects with this. And I think overall, and this goes into the next point in terms of transparency and decision maker. And they would, I don't think we want to be surprised anymore, right? And like, we would like to know what's coming. And I know it wasn't on purpose, the surprise. I know. I I know nobody likes how it turned out. Nobody enjoys how the plan, the draft report came out. But I I think maybe. An excessive amount of transparency and and making sure the the lab members and then also the board of supervisors is aware of like what the library is contemplating and like how it's going to be rolled out and how. And and what's the step after that, right? And what does the outcome of this lead to? I think that'll help. Rebuild the trust that I think we've lost in this process. And so. This is a good start, right? But like, this is something that like. It's that that's a skeleton, right? It's like, yes. And so I I look forward to like being in the loop about how it gets flushed out and how the plan evolves.
And speaking to the manager, I think perhaps even if we if the decision is made, we we start the clock in January. There's no reason we can't start filming that running the app and reminding people that here's where we are, but we don't want, we we know it's a tough time. Most of us. Turned off our television or anything for a while, but now and let people know. I think the the most important thing in the element we're trying to get across to folks is that your decisions are. That no one has to scramble to keep a library open by the end of the year because nothing is closed. And that we have some time and we will be coming out to you. And maybe that's part of our message is we start letting people start thinking about this. Because on January 1st or 5th or whatever the heck it is, there's going to be the launching of a campaign and we're getting it here for you. So noodle it with your family and and stay.
Yeah. Just one comment?
Sounds good.
Much appreciated.
Okay, yeah. Is there anything else left to discuss? I think we hit everything that we planned to, you know.
Go ahead. You can hear more about the.
I mean, they're from Canada. They're not available in the US.
I would just ask Jan that if. Maybe in whatever time passes that you think is appropriate that you can touch, but you know, whether coming to a meeting or sharing.
Tell me when you want me back in.
I I just think that. You're going to know as you go through the budget and stuff. Well, ideas that you come up with about how do we reduce the stress for librarians in the way, just for the libraries that have had a lot of incidents. Many of our facing a lot of those hours because of incidents. You know, a lot of things are going to shift of social service and funding wise in the next six months. But. You know, just to to. If if there be changes or if there's things that are like going to prompt or it's in your label. It will. Please feel free to use this as a sounding board because we would much rather be saying, oh, that's a great idea than saying, oh, my gosh. So thank you for that.
Staff knows. They know surprises cool. It's one that they hear from me all the time. And fortunately, that's what happened with nobody's, nobody's. Any movement. But put that one behind us if we can. I just, and I think you all know from your time on lab, I I am extraordinarily proud of the library staff. That we have been in Tucson. I still think it was pretty challenging like this, but I have to be Tucson in and out. We we have tremendous screen people wanting to hear again. I I hope that the things that have happened in a period of time like you. I hope you have a wide side of that of how great that this event is. I would say.
Yeah. Absolutely. Thank you for the time, both of you, and for the preparation that went into this meeting. I think this has been helpful in terms of, you know, putting the rest, nothing is changing. We will take a step back, talk with the public, make a plan, moving forward based on that information. Thank you. Uh, I need a motion. The jury, thank you.